Good evening. I call this regular Township Council meeting of December 20th, 2022 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 22nd, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28th, 2021, and the Newark Star Ledger on December 27th, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net. Would you all join me in the flag salute?
Our flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for... Adam Grignani passed away on Saturday. Gentle soul, attended a lot of our meetings, his wife is a councilwoman here at town. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Ms. Grignani has an excused absence. Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. DePiro.
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Fred Carr, Mayor James Barberio, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, January 4th, 2023 at 7:00 PM, our reorganization and combined agenda meeting. January 24th, 2023 at 7:00 PM, our regular meeting.
Approval of minutes, agenda meeting, 11:01, 22. Regular meeting, 11:22, 22. Motion to approve the minutes above by myself.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Presentations and reports. Mayor?
Laura?
I don't think that's on.
Can't hear you.
No.
All right, there you go.
There you go. On, off.
Proclamation whereas Laura McCluskey began serving on the Parcipany Environmental Advisor Committee in 1998 and became the committee chair in 2008. And whereas Laura was instrumental in forming the Parcipany Bat Protection Program facilitated the first successful Bata Palooza Fair and worked to encourage residents participation in successful wildlife preserve, bat walks. And whereas Laura was influential in initiating the plastic bag ban ordinance and working with the township on their rollout campaign to the public. And whereas projects that were completed during Laura's tenure include the low phosphate and wellhead ordinance, the Cool Cities Mayor's Commitment, the Troy Brook Study in conjunction with Rutgers, several initiatives with the Parcipany Green Team, which culminated in the bronze certification from Sustainable Jersey and the installation of a pollinator garden at the Parcipany Library, which we will continue to nurture. And something that's not on here, during the storm of Hurricane Irene, you were very instrumental in having a study done to actually what happened over there with the, when the water came out with a wall, which actually helped me out very, very much with the residents, and that truly is appreciated. Yeah. It did, I thought I was going to be drowned at one point, but anyway. In addition to serving the Parcipany, what do you call it, Environmental Advisor Committee, Laura contributed to protecting our local environment by teaching environmental education for over 30 years at Parcipany Hills High School, where she wrote the, initiated the K through 12 Environmental Education Program for Parcipany School District, thereby influencing countless students to be better stewards of our natural resources. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the mayor of the Township of Parcipany Troy Hills, hereby present this proclamation on behalf of the residents of Parcipany Troy Hills as a token of respect and admiration for Laura McCluskey, and urge the residents of our community to follow her example of service and accomplishment dated this 20th day of December 2022. That's who you are.
Absolutely.
Everybody, yes, I have a... Can I turn it this way for the... Because it's really for the town council and you, yep. But I'd also like to acknowledge the Parcipany Green Team, so a hand for them, that's Judy and Jean Marie and Lisa. And Lisa was instrumental in the Bata Palooza Program, so thank you, Lisa. And Michelle and I are working on the Pollinator Garden, and of course Janice McCarthy has been so helpful with what we're doing with all our programs. So it's not a one woman show, I know it sounded like it, but it is everybody involved. And I do have a little something to say. Mayor Barberio, township council members, residents of Parcipany, and the members of the Environmental Advisory Committee, thank you for this recognition. It has been my honor to serve Parcipany Troy Hills Environmental Advisory Committee, and it has been the highlight of my many years working in the environmental field. Amid the hustle of today's world, Parcipany is an oasis, and it has been for many decades. Starting with the Revolutionary Soldiers Cemetery, to the One Room Schoolhouse, to the infamous Rock House, its past is inspiring. And there are more modern moments such as geese flying over Volunteers Park, watching a sunrise over Lake Parcipany, and walking through the foliage at Troy Meadows, even amid the busy work groups and shoppers going about their daily chores. And the future looks even prosperous, as shown in our amazing schools, our young families, and the many children that happily live here. Parcipany is made of thousands of these moments put together. The Environmental Advisory Committee has been a part of this town's past, they are an important asset for the present, and they are focused on the future. Just the mere presence of this committee has created an overtone of awareness that we must move forward with progress in balance with nature. That is why it is so important to keep this committee active. The Environmental Committee has always been composed of people who make up this community. The committee represents the best of our town and will always be, have the best interests of Parcipany at heart. Their accomplishments are everyone's accomplishments. I wish the committee a long and prosperous future. I am an optimist, I know it's in good hands, and I believe the best is yet to come. I thank you again for this acknowledgement. Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, okay. A picture?
Thank you, no more, thank you.
Mayor, anything else?
Yes, last night I attended the library board meeting, and with regards to Mount Tabor Library, I explained to the residents there and to the library board that we're going to be budgeting for the amount of money to keep the library open, which is $81,000. And then I also told the director that myself, you, Council President, and the liaison, Frank Neglia, would like to meet with regards to Lake Hiawatha Library. So we'll be setting up that meeting as well. I also know that you've been asking me questions with regards to the signs for the EMS over there.
I was going to ask you again.
Yeah, well, I'm going to beat you to it. But we're going to move forward with the two signs, and we just, you know, you and I can speak with locations since it's two other individuals that have been there for many, many years. And that's it. But at the library board meeting, it was well-attended and well-accepted, so, so we're, you know, looking forward to it. Only, the only thing, as I said, that the money will be in the budget, but of course the council has to approve it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The signs we're talking about is dedicating a street name to Lee Keimel and Charlie Beatty, who have been involved with the township in Russian Recovery for about 40 years each. And we, we did name the entrance into the complex, Volunteers Park Complex, for Deckenback, who was 40 years on R and R on the entrance, so we're going to do the exit, I hope, for Charlie and Lee, Lee Keimel. And so he'll have a going and a coming from, from volunteers that have been there for so, so many years. Township Council, any reports? Township Attorney?
No report this evening, Council President.
Business Administrator?
Sir, I have nothing.
Township Clerk?
No report at this time, Council President, thank you.
It must be December close to Christmas. No committees or reports from the council?
Well, I had one, but the mayor already said everything on the library.
On the library board.
So that's, that's taken care of, so I just want to reiterate what he said. And just a couple of other things real quick about the Lake Hiawatha Library, they, they were concerned about the lots, the lights in the library, I know Fred just sent out an email prior, let us know about it, but I just want to express that they're really concerned about that because they have had some vandalism there. And so I just wanted to reiterate that because they were very concerned about the vandalism. In addition to that, there were, they had 12 eggs in an incubator, and 12, 12 of them hatched, so if anyone wants to adopt a chicken, I would give, or a little chick, I'd give Melissa a call at the library. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Carr, is any update on the, the light situation at the library?
No, sir, other than what I sent out after the last council meeting.
No updates since then?
No, sir.
Okay.
So the, you know, the problem, as we said, that somebody ran over the box. It wasn't just a light bulb, it's somebody backed into and took out the, the whole box.
So the box needed to be repaired or replaced?
So, so it's not our box, so we're, we have a lot of people involved in it, and Jimmy Walsh is working on it.
Okay, thank you. Engineering report?
2021 Road Resurfacing, Curb and Sidewalk Program. The annual road resurfacing, curb and sidewalk project is on hold pending negotiations with the contractor, no council action required. Pudding Stone Heights Road Improvement Project, Phase 1. Construction in the Pudding Stone Heights Improvement Project is complete, next phase of work is in design, no council action required. Rockaway River Flood Wall Levy Inspection, our consultant is working on preparing design details and cost estimate for the maintenance and repair work to the flood wall and levee. All vegetation within five feet of the wall, and the toe slope has been cleared in accordance with our inspection requirements, no council action required. Traffic signal maintenance for Littleton Road, Rita Drive, Beechwood Road, and the Jefferson Road and Smith Road intersections, the project is complete, no council action required. 2022 Road Resurfacing, Curb and Sidewalk Program, 2022 Road Resurf, Resurfacing and Curb Sidewalk Project is substantially complete. All work is anticipated to be complete by the first week of December, no council action required. North Beverick Road Streetscape Project, Phase 1. First phase of the North Beverick Road Streetscape Project is in design, we anticipate bidding this project over the winter, no council action required. Drumland Drive Stream Cleaning, the NJDEP permits have been issued for this project, our consultant is finishing the design, and we intend to bid the project over the winter, no council action required. Jefferson Road Improvements, we received a $760,000 NJDOT grant for improvements to Jefferson Road, from Parcipany Road to Smith Road. The improvements include the resurfacing roadway, minor intersection upgrades, and significant drainage improvements, particularly near the East Halsey Road intersection. Plans are in design of the project will be bid once NJDEP permits have been issued, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase 7. The Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase 7 Project is in design, we anticipate bidding this project over the winter, no council action required. Lake Intervale Area Streets Improvements, the first phase of Lake Intervale Area Street Improvement Project is in design, we anticipate bidding this project once funding is available, no council action required. Major Soil Moving Permit, Taco Bell Block 767, Lot 3.01. Planning Board has recommended approval of a major soil moving permit in conjunction with site plan application for this proposed development located at 285 Route 46. This office has reviewed the application and recommends the Township Council approve the permit. We recommend the Township Council approve the permit by resolution. Roadway Design Projects, the following projects are in design, or proposals have been requested. Troy Brook Stream Cleaning, Silver Way Sidewalk Improvements, River and Stream, Snagging Plans and Permits, Eden Road Traffic Study, Silver Way Culver Improvements, no council action required.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, the North Beverick Road Streetscape Project, we had talked about having a discussion on, a meeting on that.
Yeah, we can do that.
With the Graphic Advisory Committee.
We can do that in January, we'll do it, I'll do it, I'll call for a meeting in the second week of January.
Well, the engineer's already doing a design on it.
Yeah, they've been doing the design, you know, it was part of the, the program. And we, has to go out to bid by a certain time or we lose the grant. So we'll have the meeting in January.
Okay, thank you. No bids taken, bid to be taken, 12/21/22, 1/20/22 or newer Ford F550 regular cab with chassis four by four for Parcipany Water Department. And now I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on any matter.
When you come forward, you sign in, state your name and address, and you have five minutes, five minutes to speak.
Good evening, Ken Dollske, 21 Winfield Drive. Just about a year ago, I came in front of you to discuss a, a little project that involved a transfer of two parcels of land from Parcipany ownership to Wildlife Preserves. The parcels are in Troy Meadows. The reason that I was involved with this, or not necessarily involved, but the reason that I supported this so strongly was because, as it was explained to me by Len Ferriello, transferring those parcels, which are full of phragmities, was going to be very beneficial in terms of reducing the risk of flooding in my area of Parcipany. The phragmities raise the ground level, and Wildlife Preserves, once they owned the property, was going to remediate that and, you know, allow water that flows in the drainage ditch through my backyard and then out under Route 46 by Holiday Inn and Route 80 into Troy Meadows, and it would help reduce the risk of flooding. Especially important now that we have, you know, more, you know, major downpours. So at the time, this was not done, but I checked back with Mr. Ferriello, and he tells me that now all the permits have been approved, the DEP is happy, Green Acres is happy, anybody else involved in this was happy, except that the transfer, the deed has not actually been transferred to Wildlife Preserves. And I understand, Mayor, that the deed may be in your office waiting for you to sign it, so...
No deed in my office.
Well, so, so according to Len, this is not a done deal, he has not received ownership. And therefore I'm asking, where does this stand? What do we have to do to find out where it stands and, and finalize this? So does anybody know anything? And if not, how can we investigate it?
We can find out, that was being handled by prior council, which was Mr. Lot's office, so I can contact them and find out if they've, if they sent the deeds over to the township.
Yeah, so this was last, a year ago.
Oh, no, this has been going on for a long time, I can, I fully understand that. And the delay's been the delay, but I will check with Mr. Lot's office tomorrow, and then if you just leave your contact information, I could send you an email and let you know exactly where it is.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Those, those big tubes have been, been installed right near Route 46 for the past three or four months, that work has been ongoing.
Yeah, I had, I see it all the time. I, I wasn't sure exactly what that was going to do.
If you come around Edwards Road and make the right turn.
Yeah.
To get onto Route 46, big pipes.
Yeah.
Five or six foot diameter pipes have been going down.
So is that basically burying the, that drainage ditch?
It looks to me like the, the big six foot pipes are already done, now they're down to some four foot pipes that are going, they disappear in the ground someplace.
But it still has to go under 40, under, under 80.
Under 46, under 80.
Yeah, and that's the part, the problem part, under 80, I think.
They've been, they've been putting those pipes underground for some two or three months now.
All right. I hope, I hope something's going through them. You know, I don't know what's, I don't know what's happening with that, but hopefully, hopefully that's, that's helpful as well.
It should be. The, the small pipe that went under Route 46 before that used to clog up was why we had the problems by your house. That drain was never kept cleared.
Yeah.
But it was a small pipe anyway, now they're putting in pipes that are much larger than that, as I guess a parallel route to go further into Wildlife Preserve.
Oh. I'll take a walk over there and see what I can find. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Venedzia, I live at 102 Brooklyn Drive, and I just want to say that in my opinion, the 10% across the board utility rate increases prescribed by ordinances 2022-37 and 2022:38 cannot be justified. They've become necessary only because the current administration has deliberately elected to repeat the sins of the past by transferring one and a half million dollars in, in 2022 from the sewer surplus fund to the general budget. Between 2011 and 2020, both the previous Barberio administration and the Soriano administration made the transfer of money from the water and sewer surplus funds to the general budget an annual occurrence. During those 10 years, a total of $17.8 million was transferred. That fiscally unsound and unsustainable practice came to an abrupt end in 2021 only because there was no money left, no, no surplus money left to transfer. The utility budgets were in such bad shape that an emergency 39% rate increase became necessary just to keep the utility budget solvent. The extra revenue generated by the 39% increase did fix the problem. Once again, it was enough revenue to cover the operating expenses of the utilities and to create a positive, and to create positive surplus accounts. Under these conditions, there is no need for a 10% utility rate increases specified in tonight's ordinances unless another budgetary imbalance occurs. And that's exactly what happened when the administration decided to transfer one and a half million dollars from the sewer surplus fund in 2022 to the general, to the general budget. At this point, you probably have no choice but to pass both ordinances because of the damage that was created by the one and a half million dollar transfer. But to discourage such irresponsible transfers in the future, I suggest that the council set self-imposed restrictions that would allow a utility surplus transfer only if certain conditions are met. Thank you.
Council President, do you want to respond at the end or respond now?
Oh, you can respond now.
All right. Okay, Mr. Venedzia, there are other factors that you're not aware of, which I'm going to make aware of tonight with regards to the utilities. Now you do say that $17 million was transferred over a certain period of time, but I replenished the surpluses on several years when I was the mayor prior. But that being said, in 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, we've had water capital bond ordinance, which approximately comes to $40 million. Okay, and now we're requesting in 2023, another 13, 14 million dollars in, in bond ordinance to, for repairs, for upgrades in our wells, and that is one of the reasons why, and this came from my CFO, why we have to increase the fees by 10%. Now, that's just water. Sewer is $33 million from the same period of time, and then we're requesting $12 million, and, and those bonds are going to become due. So if you take the $45 million bonds for sewer, that comes to $3,210,000 when you divide it by 15, you take the 54 million in water, that comes to $3,611,000. Now, let's get to also unexpected costs. There was unexpected costs with the copper lead rule, which really only affects Mount Tabor, but the township water department has to come up with the funds because we're not going to get any grants from the state. All the grants are going to go to the urban areas, not to, not to Parcipany or anything like that. That's approximately 4.5 million and can be more. Okay, then we have an, and unanticipated increases in health, which really was only 10%, but the one that's really hurting us is pension costs. The pension costs will not significantly, which is 10%. So those two utilities are going to have to bear the brunt of it. Now, we didn't expect the $4.5 million in, in cost for the lead copper rule, so these are the costs that are going to, you know, that why we have to do what we have to do this time around. Okay, really, in all reality, when you look back at it, past and present, the rates should be really increased every year between two and a half percent, two to two and a half percent, to keep up with the increases and raises. And not only that, we have contractual agreements with our blue collar, and we have, we're obligated to pay those, what do you call, those, those rates. That is why, other than that, I would have never approved it, to come forward to this council, but when the CFO says, if we don't do this now, you're going to see another 39 to 40% if we continue to ignore it. And I don't mean that, I'm not, you know, I understand what you're saying, and let's get to the $1.5 million I used. I didn't have a choice. I didn't want to use it, I didn't have a choice. But we had no current fund surplus, not just that, we were in a hole big time in, for the operating budget. We're down 41 employees, just in DPW along, you know how many were significantly down, and police, police presence, as I, as I, as I always continue to tell you, were, you know, deployable 81. So, and there was other factors that, why we had to use that $1.5 million, and like you said, pretty much in an emergency fashion. Of course, we don't want to have to use it if we don't have to use it, but if we don't do this tonight, eventually, we're going to be, both those utilities are going to be sinking, so, and I thank you, Council President, for letting me respond tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Dawn Catanzaro, 86 Morris Avenue, Mount Tabor. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for your support with the Mount Tabor Library, and we're really looking forward to the meeting with the CMA to kind of go over the logistics of it. Melissa Cosma, the library director, got in touch with me, and she's anxious to go over the survey and see what will work best for our library, for the, the people that filled out the survey saying which days and hours are best for us. So hopefully this is going to be a great partnership. I had said last night at the library board meeting that there are many organizations in Mount Tabor that want to partner with the library for programs and things like that, so we're really excited about it reopening, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I noticed a lot of trees are coming down on an old golf utility, there's no public transparency about it. I noticed different issues, for example, with ash trees, but me and a friend of mine were looking at some of those trees. But me and a friend of mine were looking at some of those trees and she knows a lot more about trees than I do. And they're not all ash trees, and some of them are healthy. And I don't understand why so many, and then they're being sold for firewood. Some of it can be left right there in the woods, in the green acres, to nurse the, the ground and everything. But I just think it's inappropriate to have a public utility and have parks and forestry taking down those trees with no public input, no transparency at all. Uh, I have some papers here I want to leave with the council and the concerns, the leaf, leaf blowers. And I, I sent a couple of things, but I never get any feedback. But, uh, these things pollute and they disturb the peace. And our ordinances actually give them, with the disturbing the peace noise and emissions, they actually loopholes right in our ordinances for these devices to continue to pollute and disturb the peace. And in close quarter neighborhoods like Lake Hiawatha, believe me, it's unbelievable sometimes. And you're getting gassed. Here, uh, two cycle gas mower in twenty hours equals one years of auto emissions. A blower gas one hour equals eight hours of auto emissions. That's just part of it. Now, they do have alternative technology. What I'm asking for is simple, for this council to support the resolution by State Senator Smith to replace this technology with substances and to get rid of these polluters and disturbers of the peace. We come here and we have this big thing about cancer every year. Well, if you're breathing fumes from these two-cycle, uh, tools that blow your eardrum out and penetrate your home, it's, it's just, we say one thing, but we allow something else. So I'd appreciate if you'd read this, even when you're walking up in the hills. You can't even go to Pyramid Mountain or anywhere without hearing these things. But the only part I didn't include, and I should have, is the lithium batteries. Now, they can be recycled. And that would be a producer responsibility part of the legislation that isn't completed yet. They're going to try to redo it in twenty twenty-three. But you could actually, the manufacturer of these things could actually save costs by recycling the ore in the lithium and they could use it over and over again. So it's not like plastic or something, but it would have to be a producer responsibility. And all it is is supporting the, the resolution. So I made five copies and I would appreciate some feedback.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you some feedback now, um, with Senator Smith's bill. Well, I guess this is directed at landscapers more than it would be residential. So maybe Senator Smith would like to reimburse all the landscapers for the gas, um, blowers they have and all the money that they spent on these types of, um, equipment. Maybe he should put that in there as well.
It is in there.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, mitigation.
Every single landscaper, correct?
Yeah, if you put in for it, if you're a legitimate landscaper, if you're not a fly-by-night pachygaloo with no license going around.
Okay.
But, uh, I, I gave you a copy of the ordinance already.
Well, here's the other thing. This is just for me personally.
All right.
If I want to use a gas mower, electric, or a battery mower, I, I can't use a gas mower. I, I, I have my right to use that. Got, and they're more powerful. I've, I've used both.
Why would you want to intrude on someone's, uh, peace and quiet and pollute the air for a long culture?
The afternoon is impeding on somebody or.
Yes, it is.
And, uh, well.
Yes, it is.
That's what you say. But I'll read, I'll read it over.
What you're saying is business has a right to disturb the peace and pollute the air, even though there's better technology available. And the government is going to help these people convert to that technology.
That's, you know, I don't think it's.
It's not my opinion. It's in the legislation.
No, I don't think it disturbs as many residents as you say it does. That's all I'm saying to you. Okay, but I'll read it over. Okay?
Noise-free America.
Yep.
Google it.
I know.
People are getting mad all over the place about this stuff.
I get it.
No, see, you go with your hypothetical. Don't go with hypothetical. Stick to the issue. Read what I say, and if you can do me a little minimum respect.
I'm going to read it over. I'm going to read it over. And if I don't agree with it, I'm going to tell you.
Well, I'm, I'm, it sounds like you're not going to agree with it.
No, I'm not. That doesn't mean I'm not gonna.
All right, all right, okay.
Mr. Homiak, just give that to Colette, uh, Colette. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, Bernie Clark, Bernie Clark in, excuse me, Brooklawn Drive. I've been here before, as you know, uh, the, one of the prior speakers kind of stole one of my main concerns, which is the ten percent increase in sewer and water. But what I would like to ask all of you to do later on today, tonight, is consider amending these two ordinances to say that neither the water nor sewer funds can be raided. If you can't say forever, say for five years, six years, seven years, that you can't take money out of that to move it to the general fund for the purpose of balancing the general fund. Whatever you want to frame it, you, you know what I'm saying. I think that's a reasonable request, similar to what the other fellow said. Since he's already covered all my other points and the mayor has responded regarding that issue, there is another point that I wanted to ask you folks about. I did watch last, I guess, two weeks ago, the last council meeting when you elected or voted to turn down, uh, I think, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that the state was going to give us for, if I heard it right, electric buses plus a charging station. And it seemed like a pretty generous offer, and yet you kind of joked about it. And then the business administrator said he needed a vote. So the four council members that were present voted, no, you don't want it. I, I personally don't understand why you voted no. It sounded like it was free money and an all-around good thing. They're, they're giving us an electrical charging station and everything. So if you want to respond to that, you'd be fine.
Well, I don't know the whole thing about the grant, but it was only half and then we'd have to come up with a significant amount of money.
Um, and I don't know the exact amount, but say, I'm going to use, what I think it was.
Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that wasn't the grant. The grant was only for two hundred and fifty. We'd have to come up with the rest and, and economically, it didn't pan out for us as of right now. We're not saying, we're not going to look into electric vehicles or trucks. This is a plus. We, we're not saying we're not going to do that. It's just, as of right now, it just wasn't.
Right.
And economically, in the numbers.
All right. I thought I heard three, three fifty, but in any case.
No, it was more than that.
In any case, that answers that question. Thank you.
Want another address label?
That's easier that way.
I know.
Well, you're prepared.
Yeah, well, I used to be a boy scout. Uh. Seriously, it's a story I'll tell you sometime. Uh, my name's Mary Martin, twelve fourth place in Mount Tabor. And I wanted to join, uh, Dawn Catanzaro in thanking you for your support of myself and our neighbors. Thank you for intervening with the library board and the library director on our behalf. We look forward to working with them. And I also wanted to ask the mayor to please appoint a Mount Tabor resident to the library board for twenty twenty-three. I know you're having your reorganization meeting, um, in early January. And I know several of my neighbors, as well as I have, applied to be members of the library board.
Okay.
And then, um, Councilman Karifi, could I just ask a curiosity? What exactly is the major soil moving permit for Taco Bell? Um, uh, that you mentioned back in the engineering report?
In the engineering report? Right. Mr. Corf.
I'm taking a nap. If I may, so, um, you can't remove soil from the site in the township of Parcipine without specific permission of the, of the township. So they, Taco Bell, the developer, has, you know, if you're in a long town, there's too much dirt on the site and they have to give permission to do that. If I could pull out, yeah, we have a red flag, so I have a, give me a second here. I can pull out my resolution.
Is this the, is this the current site?
Uh, up on, up on forty-six, the one that they're fixing right now.
Yeah.
So give me a second. I have a, I have the engineering letter on the back side of the resolution.
That's reviewed and recommended by the township engineer.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But I wanted to get, but I wanted to get.
Then it comes to the council for final approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
But are they redoing, are they making a whole new Taco Bell or is this just? I thought they had just redone that Taco Bell on forty-six.
But there's, there are, um, there's going to be another Taco Bell this too now.
Okay.
There's going to be one that's further down on forty-six going east where the, um, Incrow was.
Okay, so that's my question answered. Thank you.
They're moving a, they're moving twenty-two hundred cubic yards of soil from the site. Uh, and the planning board in October recommended approval of their permit. This is the formality of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, have to say the motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two, colon thirty-five. An ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of nine hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars for the payment of contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of termination of employees in and by the township of Parcipine Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey. The notice for ordinance twenty twenty-two, colon thirty-five, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Parcipine Troy Hills on December first, twenty twenty-two, and introduced at the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two agenda meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-two, colon thirty-five, be heard in their second and final reading by title only, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia. Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passed. Public hearing. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two, column thirty-five, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on this ordinance only, seeing no one.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two, column thirty-five, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Uh, floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in this title on second reading and a hearing held thereon. Now, therefore, be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance twenty twenty-two, column thirty-five, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two, some may call it thirty-six, and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-two. I believe that's supposed to be thirty-six, not twenty-six.
No, we're amending a previous.
Okay, twenty-six, entitled an ordinance establishing white calistally ranges for the township of Parcipine Troy Hills. The notice for ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-six, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Parcipine Troy Hills, on December first, twenty twenty-two, and introduced at the November twenty twenty, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two agenda meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-six, be heard in their second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Public hearing. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-six, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on any matter? Well, no, on this ordinance only, sorry, seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-six, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by, uh, Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held hereon. Now, therefore, be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on the final reading and that final notice of, notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-six, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-two, colon thirty-seven, and ordinance of the township council of the township of Parcipine Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three twenty-nine, section seventeen, sewer rental fees of the code of township of Parcipine Troy Hills. This notice for ordinance two thousand twenty-two, colon thirty-seven, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Parcipine Troy Hills, on December first, two thousand twenty-two, and introduced at the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two agenda meeting. Motion to accept ordinance two thousand twenty-two, colon thirty-seven, be heard in the final, in the second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only. We have someone. Come on up, Mr. Clarkin.
Okay, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I am asking all of you to consider amending this ordinance and the next one about the water fund to state that you can't, nobody, whether it's anybody here or anybody in the future for, say, the next six or eight years, cannot raid this fund. And when I say raid, I, I think you all understand what I mean. Take money out of this fund to use for other purposes in the town's budgets. So I respectfully ask you to consider doing that now. Thank you.
Mr. Labrie.
Yes, sir.
Is, is the present council legal to bind future councils to restrictions like that?
Well, this, the statute specifically allows you to transfer money out of the utility. So you, you could, you could change the ordinance, but any other council could change it down the road. So it's, it could be temporary, it could be, you know, normally you don't want to bind councils down the road, but you could put a limit on it. But the fact of the matter is, um, this is on for second reading.
Future, future councils can make their own decision.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question. Like Mr. Labrie says, we can transfer money out of utilities. Why is it always the water and sewer? When we didn't have enough last time and all that infrastructure collapsed, why can't we take it out of something like the Knoll Golf?
It's been taken out of there too.
Uh, is there any, how much or?
Different years, different amounts.
So we do?
I remember Mimi Lex repaved the entire roadway from Lake Hiawatha to Boonton using the Knoll funds, when that road is really an access road and it serves other, other departments, not just the Knoll Country Club. Um, so there are different ways it's been taken out. Some prior mayors have had people assigned to, uh, getting paid by the Knoll that were assigned to other departments temporarily. There are different ways that, that they can skin a cat that we never really liked or approved.
Could we have like a, an example of why?
I just gave you two examples.
No, I'm talking about why we would use water and sewer for any other purpose. What would that purpose be? For paving a road?
All right, let me, let me give you some history. When we, when the township about twenty years ago completely redesigned the sewer treatment plant. That was a huge project. The original sewer treatment plant was forty-five years old. It was archaic. It was manufactured, discontinued for at least twenty of, of the forty-five years. They were having trouble finding parts to keep it working. And it was very inefficient because it was not state-of-the-art technology when it was built in, in nineteen sixty. Um, but at that point in time, um, every time the EPA came out with a new mandate, some, takes another particle out of the, the waste before we dump the water into the stream. We built a new building to process that particle.
Right.
And then they would come out with a new mandate, we'd have to build a new building. New mandate, build a new building. Well, these were all buildings that were using pumps, compressors, condensers, uh, all, all kinds of equipment that were taking up, uh, a lot of electricity.
kinds of equipment that were taking up a lot of electricity. In fact, the sewer treatment plant was the third-largest use of electricity in the electric company's energy grid, third-largest user. Now, Wayne had a sewer treatment plant, the same capacity as the township's, 15 million gallons per day processing capability. But theirs was built 15 years later and had newer technologies. And even though they had the same capacity, their electric bill was 75% less than Parsippany's. So we were pushing to upgrade our sewer treatment plant. And when that finally took place, two of those buildings became completely empty. We didn't need them anymore to process under the newer technologies. And we were also in a good position for any new mandates that come out from the EPA. We could handle it without putting up new buildings. So that efficiency produced a surplus in the sewer treatment plant. Now, there's two things we can do. We can lower the rates for everybody, but that includes lowering the rates for commercial properties, not just homeowners, commercial properties and all of the towns that we are also serving. Mountain Lakes, portions of Montville, East Hanover or Hanover. If we reduced the rates, it would reduce it for everybody, not just Parsippany residents. However, if we took the surplus that we were generating, not the fund balance, now we always had a fund balance, which is the amount you need for emergencies, rainy day, whatever you want to call it, we call it a fund balance. Not touching the fund balance, we could still take money out and give it back to the residents of Parsipony and not benefit the other towns and the commercial properties. It will, it will benefit the township properties. That's how we got into the process of using some of that surplus to give back to the township by balancing the budget. We chose to give it back that way. Now, that's great, makes sense, but as we kept doing that, the costs for running the sewer treatment plant and the water plant were going up. Chemicals were costing more, benefits were costing more, salaries were going up a little bit at a time. And so we were not keeping up with the general cost of operating it. That fund balance was being depleted without even realizing it. That was the reason we had the 39% increase. We, we kept using that fund balance and not anticipating that costs were going up to operate the plants at the same time.
Now, I was just saying outside anything but water and sewer. And the last, what's going on with Matt Kavanaugh's suggestion from the Green Team to turn the sewer plant solar to save on the electric bill? Is there anything going on with that?
Yes. This, I mean, it has nothing to do with the ordinance.
Doesn't it do anything?
Yeah, I met with the Green Team last week, and we're going to, I'm gonna be meeting with the superintendent of the Sewer Department with regards to the $20,000 grant that they received, and we're gonna decide if it's advantageous for the town to do it.
Yeah. All right, I was just thinking, anything other than water and sewer? That was my question, but that...
No, the four fund balances that we have to be concerned about in the township are the water, the sewer, the Knoll, and the township fund balance. And those were depleted in 2021, they were gone, and that's why we had the problem that we had in 2022. But that's being corrected now, and we should be okay after this.
All right, it's really chump change anyway, really.
Anyone else? Seeing no one?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corrigan, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve resolution above for ordinance 2022:37, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corrigan, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:38, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 420, Water to Increase Water Rates and Charges. The notice for ordinance 2022:38 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on November 7, 2022, and introduced at the November 1, 2022, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:38 be heard in their second and final reading by title only, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Or Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only. Come on up, Nick.
Me again. I'd just like to make the council aware that Parsipony has a phenomena that's called water mining. When our water is, goes to the sewer's treatment plant, both of them, our water, treated water exits the aquifer, which means it's part of the reason why Parsipony has a water deficit. Now, NJDEP will say Parsipony has no water deficit, but that's not quite true because NJDEP bases their assumption on how much water did Parsipony pump over the year? Okay, you got plenty of water, but they're not considering the water that's not going back in the ground. And in the past, Parsipony has not done a good job in protecting its groundwater resource recharge areas. So the two diversions that we depend on, Jersey City and Morris County, they're both privately owned, I believe. So if we ever get to the point where our water rates can go up because the private sources will say, okay, if you need this much water now, we're gonna have to charge you more. So that should be considered. And I want you to also ponder that Parsipony is, in a way, it's overdeveloped, or built out would be a nicer way to say it. So one of the few things that we have left in this town, besides defending our neighborhood character and our sense of home, is defending our water supply. So we don't need any new land developments or anything like that anywhere in this town because there's plenty of redevelopment. And if we keep on doing things like that, eventually our water bill will go up because we're gonna have problems again with wells going dry, and we're gonna have to depend on the diversions more. So I'd just like to use to ponder those facts about our water supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Anyone else? Seeing no one?
Make a motion to close public hearing for ordinance 2022:38, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2022:38, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:39, an ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, creating Chapter 430, zoning article LX11, OVL-7, overlay district, and providing definitions used in bulk standards for such overlay districts. The notice of ordinance 2022:39 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on November 7, 2022, and ordinance, and introduced at the November 1 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022:39 be heard in its second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Corrigan. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing, motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022:39, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on this ordinance only, seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
For ordinance 2022:39, by myself.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Corrigan. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held hereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve resolution above for ordinance 2022:39, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corrigan, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held hereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve resolution above for ordinance 2022:39, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Corrigan. Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Nonconsent agenda.